2016 bond and it is part of a $5.88 million bond. So, my question is, if it was authorized, everything was approved in December 2nd, 2016, why wasn't it going out for an RFP then? Why wasn't it sent out to have the work?
I'll let Mr. Wyver answer to that, but once we had DEM approval, and then they went back and tweaked whatever their comments were, they started developing the RFP documents and the plans. So they'll go out to...
Because I was, I mean, I spoke to David Choppie from Rhode Island DEM, and he said they could have started the project on December 3rd, 2016.
Oh, you would have started the project in...
What I'm saying is, you had approval. So, I, what happened from December 2nd?
I'll be happy to have Mr. Wyver answer to this question.
Okay, terrific, thank you. I'm just trying to figure this out because it's so confusing. I mean, we have in our resolution that it's a judgment bond approved in 2014. We don't have a judgment bond from 2014. So, if you could help me out, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, when the permit was issued that allowed under the DAM safety regulations, the project worked to proceed. At that point, we are 60% design. In order to have construction-ready documents, those need to be up to 100%. So, after December, we proceeded to address the final conditions that were issued with DEM in their order. One of them, one being in relation to the period in which the work can be done, which is a seasonal restriction as to the water quality impacts. And from our perspective, the work is most cost-effectively done during the low-water season. So you're not paying a contractor to manage, you know, the water. You want to pay them to manage the soils and do the actual improvements. So, from our perspective, we put together technical specifications. We took the design drawing from 60% to 100%. We assisted the town in preparing bid documents, contract documents, the invitation to bidders. And through the town review of those documents, incorporated their comments and requests, and then, you know, assisted in issuing the bid and through the bid process.
Okay, so what happened in 2014? We received the notice of violation in '13. We had the consent agreement in '14. What happened in '14?
So, what, the last inspection was conducted in 2011, actually, which identified a number of concerns and conditions to the dam. What we needed to do after the consent agreement was entered into was to conduct supplementary investigations, which included subsurface investigations as to the character of the soils, the condition of the downstream, stone basement retaining walls seeped through the embankment. One of the primary deficiencies in relation to the dam, or two frankly, one is that there's no low-level outlet structure. There's no means in which to lower the impound level should there be an emergency to the condition of the dam. Secondly, as to the hydraulic adequacy of the dam, which means the capacity for it to pass a flood flow through an engineered structure. The floods of 2010 overtopped the embankment, as you may be aware. There is a low part that is a vulnerable section of the embankment should another flood event occur. In order to design the structure to safely pass the flood flow, we needed to conduct a hydraulic and hydrologic evaluation, essentially to say, for a 500-year storm, then what is the volume of water that's going to come through the dam? Right now, the only engineered structure is like, believe me, a 30-inch corrugated metal pipe that goes down through the embankment. What we had to do was to say, for that volume of water that comes through, what is the size of an overtopping spillway configuration that would allow that water to pass through without endangering the structure, without endangering the downstream properties, to ensure that the impound remains after the storm, but is passed? In doing that, we looked at a number of alternatives. Again, we wanted to find the most cost-effective that gives the greatest lifetime for the work that could be achieved within the funding that the town has. So, when we looked at different engineering alternatives to pass that flood flow, we reviewed them with Bob and Kevin. We looked at advantages frankly and disadvantages of each, and then came to a mutual decision as to what is most advantageous for the town to proceed towards that permitting stage in 2014, 2015.
So, basically, you've been working on this since '14, '15, '16?
Yep.
Now '17, so are you going to change anything again?
No.
I mean, because it just seems we've been really slowly moving towards this.
We're ready for work.
Well, we have to get the funding, correct? Because this is still, it's not accurate.
So, as far as the project itself, we're ready to go forward for September start, so they get majority of the chips completely done this year and doing final...
Okay, and I know Fuss and O'Neil, very reputable, helped reconstruct the dam next to Anthony Loffs, correct? Down there, received a lot of awards since that time. Wasn't there one just recently on that stabilization for the...
For the national award.
Exactly. I read that. Yeah, that was for my Nathaniel Green Memorial Bridge, which some people still call Laurel Avenue Bridge. But it was a kind, you know, concern, and it took several years. 2010 was March when it went down. And years later, I remember cutting the ribbon for some of the federal delegations for that. So, I'm sure this will be done well, and you guys are recommending, or the low bid was a T4 company, is that correct?
That's correct.
They're, I'm sure they're reputable. They've done a lot of similar work, and they ought to do our upper dam. Okay, and it's needed, is that...
Yes, it is.
Okay, any other questions then? If not, yes.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
We have many dams in this town.
I know.
And they've collected for years and years. Mr. Dandy, if you can, if you fail, we have real problems.
You can't accept your downfall, yes? So, I'm all for it.
Okay. All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve then.
Motion to approve.
Wait, wait, wait.
That was a motion to approve. Do we have...
A second.
A second. Let's get it on the table, and then discussion. Discussion.
The funding. We have, I mean, how much is...
The funding.
Yes.
Good question. Mr. Tebow. We might have that funding, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, as of August 23rd, the remaining balance in the upper dam pond, upper dam bond pond account.
Pond dam, dam pond.
Is $527,025.55. The contract is for $573,100. So, it's not enough of a remaining balance in the account. Spoke to Bond Counsel Karen Granday today, and managed to sort of compensate. We had, basically, we'll be coming before council in two weeks with another resolution to issue an additional judgment bond for approximately $125,000. If council does not approve that, then we'll have to find an alternate funding source to pay the balance due to the contractor and to the discretionary.
Okay, any further discussion? It's needed.
I have to say, this is very confusing. I was one of those two votes that voted no because I thought we had to go to the voters for this bond. But now we decided we didn't need to because of the kind of bond it is, right? Mr. Gorham?
Yes? That's correct.
So, the difference between the $527.25 and the $573, where do we have the money for that in our budget right now?
We don't, the, in two weeks, we will come before you with a resolution put there by Bond Counsel Karen Granday to approve additional funds via a judgment bond that would be issued within probably the next 12 to 18 months. If council does not approve that judgment bond, then we'll have to find an alternate funding source to...
So that's, that's the $125,000?
That's an approximate number.
That'll include the contract to pay the difference between what we have left as a balance and what the contract that was doing the work will be paid as additional engineering. I recommended to us, maybe actually today, that we include a small contingency in there in the event that there are additional things that are found out while our project is going on because it wouldn't make sense to come back to you for a third time and ask for a little bit additional money if needed. The bond would be issued after the work would be done, so we would have the ability to bond exactly what we need, although it would be a good practice to optimize a little more just in case. So we wouldn't have to come back a third time on this matter, and then we'd have to cover the cost of issuance of that bond.
And we don't have, I'm sorry, we don't have to go to the voters?
Negative.
Okay, and also, I think I asked this question last time. We have already paid Fuss and O'Neil for their engineering, and now we're adding on another $80,000. Is that in addition to what we paid?
No, in the original estimate, that was, that was big. The original estimate that Fuss and O'Neil provided and one of the broker for council, Tom Hoover was here, he decided to go, it was a range. He wanted the lower end of the range, 400 and change. Part of that number for the five included the engineering. Unfortunately, now, we follow the actual cost from the bidders is at $573, so it was more than what was estimated. That does not include the engineering. Now, we've already paid $45,000 to Fuss and O'Neil. There's still a balance of that 79 that needs to be, that's part of this.
So the actual, real cost of the engineering was the 45 and the 79?
No, and it's going to be basically $31,000. It's still going to be around that 79,000.
So it's not $80,000?
Sorry?
It's not another 79,000?
It's not another 79,000. It's the balance, because it was originally included as part of the estimate for the project. We've had to back that up because the cost of projects is higher than what the estimate was. They still need to be paid, so the balance of the engineering that's going to be required is about $31,000.
It's just been really confusing because I remember when all this happened, and David was sitting, sitting there, and he was talking about, David Choppie was sitting there and talking about, you know, we were having notices of violation, all that stuff. So, it's just been a long time, four years.
It's needed, and it has been a long time.
Well, it's not a question of need, it's just that it's been a long process.
It has been. Like the bridge on Laurel Avenue. It takes a long time to get it right. And Mr. Hoover, I imagine he estimated low, hoping it would be, him being a civil engineer, not knowing for sure. And, you know, hindsight's 2020, sort of five years later. Okay, so we got a motion on the floor?
Hold on, one more, one more question.
Okay, one more question, go ahead.
No, I don't have a question, I just have a comment.
No, I thought you were...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Discussion, who's got the question?
I have a comment.
I've got one there.
All right, right over here, and then over there, and then we'll vote, all right?
Okay. The town does own the dam, does it not?
It does.
Okay, whereas, you know, the other dam behind here is owned by the, you know, the...
Whitney Brothers Works. There are many dams that apply, there are identified dams that are high hazard.
Have we owned any other dams in this town?
There you go, that's my question.
There are approximately about 12 additional dams that the town owns. There are other high hazard dams that the town does not own, but it's upon the homeowner or the business owner to take care of those. None of, no other dams that we have are in violation from DEM.
Okay, did you cover your question?
He did, and I just have one comment. Yeah, I just have a comment. With that being said, maybe we should get a report on how many of these dams are high hazard significant, so we know. I mean, like this, this has been going on since 2013. We probably should, council should have probably had periodic updates on what was going on. That's why this would not be so confusing right now.
You folks just had before you the last meeting, the hazard mitigation plan? Part of that had all the dams and what just their ranking was? We had all those dams and where they, where they ranked within the town?
I, I read the entire document.
Of the mitigation plan?
However, that document doesn't tell me if they're town-owned or privately owned, so...
We have that, and that's part of, in the EMA office, we'll have that provided for.
Yeah, I don't, that would be great to know.
Okay, Mr. Gorham has a question.
Thank you. Who determined that the town owns the dam and therefore had sole responsibility to repair it? Who determined that?
I'm sorry, that's way before you arrived. That's, this is going back, well, we were notified, I guess DEM has that on record, and there was record of the town being aware, being notified that their dam was in degrade back in 2009.
I understand that, but just because DEM says somebody owns a piece of property doesn't mean they do. And I'm just curious, who made the determination that the town owns the dam? Or any of these dams?
We have a list of dams that are listed as owned by the town. Somebody determined that sometime, I'll be happy to go over with you. I don't, I don't know.
Because we're spending a lot of money to fix them. And I just, I, because the DEM dam program, they are looking for people to fix dams. That's their job.
If this is a question, I would have been happy to research that way before, but I don't have that information for you right now.
Well, the consent judgment's already done. It was done, Mr. Sizer, get that information to the town council.
Yes, that would be good.
Forthcoming, and then research can go on, for not at all.
I just... By the way, Mr. President.
Well, I don't know, are you through with your question?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Back a few years ago, Paul Sprague put out a notice. He gave me a list of all the dams. I don't know if I still have it home, but there is a list out there of all the dams that the town has. I don't know, you know, if it's deed to the town or how that works if it was funded by the dam. But there is a list of all the dams in the town ecology that was bigger than it got for us.
And research will come up with the answer, I'm sure. Okay. Do you have any other comments, Mr. Doyle?
Well, if I was ownership of a dam, if you do go to the GIS program, which ties to the tax collectors, tax assessors and collectors office, it does show the town as being the owner of that, it's law.
Right, good. The only question that remains is, who decided that? We'd have to go back to the archives. The pioneer days, Comtry, was it 1741? Okay, all right, so no other question, I don't think. We got a motion on the floor, and a second, all in favor.
We have to amend, though. Because this is a judgment bond approved in 2014. It's not 2014.
Well, yeah, the date does, I made that note. As far as, wait a minute, where are we?
Page 114.
Okay, 114.
What was the resolution by the council in 2014? Isn't that when it was?
Well, yeah, funded through the judgment bond. Is that something different, Mr. Gorham? Should we have to change the wording?
Can that be the approval, the date, what the council resolution?
I talked to...
Well, the resolution was 2016.
I know, I talked to Mr. Tebow about this. I don't think you need to, we're not, we're not approving a change to that judgment bond so-called tonight. All we're doing is awarding the bid.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. And the funding, I think there's a high probability that it will come back before you again, and your issue at that time will be germane. But tonight, I don't think, I had the same question, for what it's worth, and that question's going to be addressed eventually when they come back for the funding that they're probably going to need to finish the project.
Correct.
And there will be a time and a place for that to be heard.
But there were no bonds in 2014.
It's not...
But there were no bonds in 2014. Here's the list of our bonds.
Right, it was, it was approved after 2014, if I'm not mistaken, on the basis that it was a judgment or settlement that we had to fund. And it was part of a multi-part bond issue.
Correct, the council back in 2014 approved that they're to issue a bond.
Right.
But not, I don't think the bond was actually issued until 2016, but the approval before that was put down in 2014.
Right.
But shouldn't this reflect the fact that this really was in 2014?
Well, I think it was reflected in the 2016 bond issue. I mean, it would, it would be unusual if we funded it before there was an agreement.
Let me ask this, where, Mr. Tebow, where is this being funded from?
Majority of it will be funded from the 2016 bond issue. The remainder, we will discuss probably in two weeks with council.
Okay, so change 2014 and 2016?
Yeah. I mean, we should have it right, it should say 2014.
I know, but it's not...
I would say, as council said, we're only here for the awarding of the contract, not for the bonding tonight.
Right, I was worried about that myself, but we're not funding it tonight. Not any more than it was funded in 2016 properly. If there is, if there is any, whatever, shortfall, they're going to have to come back and get it funded that way, and I'm sure they will.
We're going to discuss it.
Through the council, and only through the council.
If it was said by the council, and they would change the word "approved" to "issued" and change 2014 to 2016, the judgment bond was issued in 2016.
Yeah.
And that's the source of the funding, regardless of the fact that this is just a resolution awarding the contract.
This is how we get to five years later and nobody can understand what's going on?
It was, it was approved by the council in 2016, and it was approved not by the voters, but by the council because that's what the law authorizes, right?
And it was approved for $560,000, and the bond is for $550,000.
That might have all been, that was approved by the bond council.
It's not unusual for the, the full amount that's authorized to be different than the issue. Going back in recollection, but I'm going to hypothesize that the reason for that was the cost of issuance was lower than anticipated. Therefore, we only needed to issue 550, not 560.
Okay.
Okay, so, the wording, counselor?
Yes.
Is it okay to stay the way it reads in front of us? Do you want to tweak it?
It's fine either way, it doesn't matter. You can say issued or approved, it's inconsequential.
I would recommend to get the motion amended to say issued in 2016.
There's just no need to change my motion. Let's just, I put this motion on the floor, we'll address it. Next time, when it comes in, there's just no need to change it. We're wasting a lot of time.
All right.
Some motion, some motion on the second?
Okay, so we, I think we're done with discussion up to this point now. More discussion coming at tractions. All in, all in favor of approving this resolution?
Aye.
Aye, okay, no opposed, okay. All right, E5 is done.
Thank you very much.
F, thank you. F1, okay, now, I had a, I didn't see, did we switch the orders of F1 and F2?
Yes, we should.
I know. Did we?
We did not, I don't know if we did on the amendment.
We did.
We did on the amendment.
It is, which I don't have, but as long as somebody has it. So we'll go with number two first. All right, number two. Mrs. George, you want to cover that one, right? And the revocation, revocation.
Revocation of Class B liquor license of Arrow LLC, 402 Washington Street, County, Rhode Island, also identified as plat 56-071.
Okay, now that you've covered that, I'd like to entertain a motion to open up public hearing regarding this matter. Do you have a motion to open up a public hearing?
Motion to open up a public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I oppose.
Mr. Shidley, I am going to recuse myself because of past business dealings and this, and because of the nature of this particular revocation.
Appreciate it, I know Mrs. George will have a sheet to sign later on. Okay, all right. Well, we have the revocation in front of us. So you want to make any comments there, Mr. Gorham, on this one? Or is it just the way it is?
Quick explanation, in order to maintain any liquor license, you have to have a location. That's one of the ways, one of the principal ways that the town regulates the sale and distribution of alcohol. So, if you don't have that, then there's a problem with your license. So, we have an affidavit from the landowner who says that the, the current license holder, Arrow LLC, I'm just going to paraphrase this affidavit, some of it basically says, they have no right to possession of that property, they have no right to occupy it, they haven't paid the rent, et cetera. So, that being the situation, I think it is appropriate in order for this town council to consider revoking the license because the essence of it, the location, ceases to exist.
All right. Do we have that enforced, the rope on, outside of your letterhead from your office?
Yes, I would note for the record as well, Mr. President, we mailed this to the registered agent, and also, just out of an abundance of caution, as we typically do with revocation notices, we had the letter served with the affidavit, just as I had mailed it, by the police department. And I asked them to generate a report, which they did, and that's included in the packet at page 157. So, I think we are properly conducting the public hearing. I think notice is proper. And I think you can just ask if there's anyone who wants to weigh in on the public hearing, including the applicant, most especially, uh, excuse me, the license holder, excuse me.
Okay, is there anyone wishing to comment at this time regarding the revocation? Or maybe the potential new licensee, I don't know. Anyone, did I say that right?
Well, we already had a public hearing.
Right, I know that.
On the prospective licensee, and that's when we discovered this problem, that we have a license holder, that's Arrow. So, this hearing, the only purpose for this hearing that we're conducting at the moment is to hear any testimony for or against revoking Arrow's license at 402 Washington Street.
Okay, that's what I kind of started with, and I still maintain that question. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Hearing none, I see none, I hear none. So there is none. So do we have to, we close public hearing before we vote?
Sure, and then I can, you know, yes, yes.
All right, a motion to close public hearing on this matter.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, it's closed. All right, now, motion to revoke the license as noted here, Class B license of Arrow LLC, 402 Washington Street, County, Rhode Island.
Motion to revoke.
Okay, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, rise up, revoked. Now, motion to open up again, is that...
Yeah, you know, I think you can do that because this was advertised as a public hearing for the applicant for whom we already had a public hearing, but I don't see any harm. We're here, we can just open it. And if there's anybody who wants to say anything, noting there are about six people here.
Okay.
They can speak.
A motion to open public hearing.
So both.
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Public hearing is now open regarding number one. Mrs. George, you want to read that?
It's an application by Kenneth Page for a new Class B liquor license. With Vicdrolin Fisheris coming along in at 402 Washington Street.
Okay, and we see all the notations at the bottom of reference of 11, page 146. No issues, concerns, applicant has already obtained before the town issues, applicant must submit proof of alcohol server training, board of health approval, certificate of good standing. So, those all being stated with any, any comment for the public on this? Any comments at all regarding this matter, yes?
Just for the councils, to put this in context, I think we can consider everything that we heard from the applicant at the prior hearing. I think it's entirely appropriate to do that. It'll save us some time as well. I think they made a presentation that I'm not mistaken, so.
Think they did.
Motion to close public hearing?
A motion, a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, then, a motion to approve the new Class B liquor license.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's been approved. Okay. Okay. Good luck.
Thank you. I was going to go buy a truck, I guess the little roadside shack, I don't know. Put me out of business. Thank you so much.
Good, thank you.
Looking for those myself.
Here we go.
Thank you.
This has a touche, is it not, counselor? A touche, I don't know.
The hot dogs just leave it.
Got it. Yeah, remember the weenie woman? Yeah, right on. Yo, dealership.
Sure.
Yeah, hot weens. Okay, where are we? Action only, G, G one. We do this one at a time, Mr. Gorham, or action only? I guess we do, huh? Number one. Mrs. George, you want to just read that one? We've already discussed this all, we've already talked about them. This is just to go out and vote on them.
Didn't we actually vote on these already?
Certainly, I would like to understand.
Yes, go ahead.
If you'd like to understand.
Yes, I'm due.
These were all, if I'm not mistaken, the subject of public hearings, and we went through and we did, they were each subjects of the public hearing. And we went through and discussed them, and then voted on them. I noticed after that although it was advertised as a public hearing, it didn't say discussion and action, which is the touchstone to alert the public that we're going to vote. And I know it's implicit that if you're having a public hearing, you're probably going to vote, but I think to err on the side of caution, it makes great sense for us to vote them tonight again, with proper notice that we're going to vote. That's the only reason.
So is this to ratify the former vote, or is that former vote void because of that lack of, you know?
You know what? It could be...
Is it to ratify or to, is it a brand-new vote?
It's to... I would call it, to be safe, a brand-new vote. Because we did everything we were supposed to do last time, which was we had a public hearing and discussed it. We just went the extra step without that touchstone of notice that we were going to vote. We went ahead and voted, and I think the best thing to do is treat this as a vote.
This is to err on the side of, say, these are the open meetings law, I guess?
That's it. This is driven entirely by the open meetings.
So we all recall, I think, number one, on the matter, amending Article Six, zone, zone use, we have in front of us a motion to approve. We'll, yeah, all the changes that...
That were at the last...
Well, this is on the matter one, is it right?
Is this the matter one?
Yeah, this is, no changes, all right? No, 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 and, 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 all right.
Didn't we vote on, on two amending ordinances?
Yes, that's coming later. This is one at a time.
I'm sorry, there it is at the top of the other page, okay, that's... Okay, I'm lost here there.
We didn't change anything on the matter one? I thought we changed like one, we didn't change anything that you recommended? Nothing?
The minutes, if you look at them like...
Wait, wait, of all sorts, of all sorts. It was, we remember planning came back with of any type.
Yes.
So we approved that, so with the change that's already been made, that's what we're voting on. And that's what, in any form, I think it was. You're right. You didn't have it with us, but that, that's how we voted.
I believe that that is reflected in your minutes as well.
Yes.
If not, we should have...
It's not like this, or we just approved. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Yes, we did have a second, didn't we?
Motion for a second.
I thought Kenny said...
Yeah, on the matter one.
No, no, no. No, we need a motion.
Okay, we need a second. We got a motion.
Second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Open meeting, all right.
Been a long meeting.
Yeah. All right, now, number two, do we take two and three together? As we make changes and change it on both?
That is entirely appropriate. That is appropriate.
Okay, we're, right now, I need, I'm asking for a motion to approve as amended the last time. Number two, amended Chapter one fifty-three with changes. And number three, amended eighty, Chapter eighty-nine, alcohol beverages as amended.
I'll make that motion as soon as I say it.
Okay, a seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
One opposed.
Okay, four oh one, like last time. Very good. Now, finally, we have H. Page three for this one. H, general public comment. General public comment, going once. General public comment. Okay, not hearing any? Motion to adjourn. Seconded? Seconded? Yes, I think we've got a second. Didn't we, Mr. McGee? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Nine, ten. It just seems later than that.